Okay. Okay, we're going to call the Chino City Council, which is a successor agency to the redevelopment agency, together along with the Chino Planning Commission. This is a joint workshop. Please note that all members are present except for Councilmember Lucio and Chairperson Jimmy Alexandandris from the Planning Commission. I'd like to ask Karen Comstock to please lead us all in the flag salute, so if you'd please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please join me in saluting our nation's flag? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all very much. You may be seated. First item on our agenda is public communication. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the council and the commission on any item that is not elsewhere on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on any item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number one. Review of Preferred Land Use Plan and Key Strategies for our 2024 General Plan Update. This is to receive a presentation on our potential land use and transportation changes to incorporate into the general plan and zoning code, the update, and provide feedback to the staff and the consultant on the content to be included in our public review draft general plan. I'd like to request a report now from our principal planner, Mike Hitt, and our consultant from Deaton, Badiya, Andrew Hill.
Good evening, Mayor. Do you have any questions?
I don't think your mic is on.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, planning commissioners, thank you so much for being here tonight. This is really, really important meeting for us. I'm very excited to hear your feedback. This is, we started, kicked off the general plan update in October of 2022. So this is almost a two-year outreach that we've done. Reached out to a lot, went to a lot of community events, a lot of pop-up events, had a couple surveys, did polling. We've got a lot of outreach from the public that's really helped us culminate to get to this point in time today. So we have our consultant here, Andrew Hill from Diet Batia. He's going to do, going to go through his presentation, kind of give you the flavor of what we've heard from our community. So it's really exciting. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Mike, and good evening, council and, and planning commission. So, here we are. So yes, as Mike said, tonight, we are at the end of Phase Two, and this is a really important milestone for us in the general plan update. And we're very excited to present to you the Preferred Land Use Plan and Key Strategies for the, for the general plan update. This really summarizes what we've heard from the community to date, and it presents the preferred concepts that have emerged from that conversation with the community. Before we move into the next phase of the work, which involves rolling up our sleeves and preparing the, the full public review draft general plan, we wanted to take the opportunity to update you on what we've heard and confirm that these, these concepts are the right ones to move forward with in the, in the general plan. So the objectives tonight are to introduce the preferred plan and key strategies to you and to receive feedback with a view to refining them for inclusion in that public review draft. I have a presentation to set things up. I want to provide a recap of the outreach that we've done, explain a little bit more about what is a preferred plan and what it's used for, and then I'll go through an overview of the preferred plan and key strategies with a specific focus on four key areas of the city: downtown, the central and Riverside corridors, the central and Philadelphia corridors, and a large site at Euclid and Bickmore in the south of the city. I'll also touch on concepts for other areas of the city and then do a quick look ahead to next steps in the process. And then I'll turn it over to Dennis Rawls, who's also going to provide an overview of the circulation element. And so in terms of an approach tonight, there's, there's quite a lot of material to get through. What I thought I would do is proceed area by area. And so for each of those areas that I mentioned, I'll start with an overview of the concept and the community input that's informed it, and then we'll open it up for council and commission discussion. In particular, we would like to hear from you, are these the right ideas to move forward with in Phase Three? Would you recommend any refinements to those concepts? Or are there any other big ideas that you'd like to see incorporated into the, into the general plan? And then we'll move on to the next, next area. I'll do a quick presentation, pause for, pause for discussion, if that makes sense. I think it, it's going to be easier to digest and, and move through the, move through the material if we chunk it up that way. So let me start with a recap of the, of community outreach. Really, community outreach and involvement has been a cornerstone of this process right from the beginning. And to date, over 2,350 community members have participated in some way, shape, or form, whether through surveys or in-person at, at community of, pop-up events or at our workshops. So a very robust level of, of community participation. In Phase One, our outreach was really about understanding issues and opportunities from the perspective of community members and hearing from them what kind of place, what their vision for the future of Chino was. And as a result, we distilled that input into a set of guiding principles that really described the kind of place that Chino residents and businesses want their community to be in 2045. Then in Phase Two, building on that vision that emerged from, from Phase One, the objective of our outreach was to explore different concepts for land use, transportation, and design that could help achieve the vision of the guiding principles. We focused in particular on key areas of the city where change is foreseeable, as you can see on the map. And we held two community open house meetings that were attended by over 250 people. We had recently an interactive online survey that garnered over 600 responses. We also worked with a polling firm to do a statistically valid survey of Chino voters. And, and we also did presentations to various community groups, including the Faith-Based Collaborative, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Kiwanis Club. And of course, we had multiple meetings with our GPAC, our Community Advisory Group, to help vet these concepts for, for inclusion in the, in the preferred plan. And so with that, let me move to the preferred plan itself. Really, before I dive into the details, let me talk a little bit more about what the preferred plan is. As I say, it's, it's the, it's the key deliverable of Phase Two, and it really summarizes the key outcomes of the community process so far. So it presents the preferred ideas and concepts that have emerged from that conversation with the community. It focuses on areas of Chino where change is foreseeable in the next 10 to 20 years, and it puts an emphasis on land use, transportation, and community design in particular because those are the factors that are, that'll move the needle the most on the technical modeling of traffic, air quality, noise, and utilities demand that we need to do in Phase Three. And really, at this stage, we want to present these broad concepts to you all and get your feedback before we move into Phase Three and actually start crafting the general plan around them. I want to point out that these concepts do not necessarily represent the final policy direction at this time. We want to confirm at, at a high level that they're appropriate to move forward with, but then in Phase Three, we're going to dial them in further. And to do that, we'll be having meetings with, with key property owners. City staff from various departments will be reviewing the programs and the policies in detail to confirm that they're feasible and appropriate. And of course, each of the elements will be reviewed by our general plan advisory committee before we, before we release the public review draft. But at this stage, we do want to confirm that these are the right big ideas to move forward with, and we were looking forward to your feedback on that tonight. So with that, I'll, I'll move into our first area, which is downtown. Now, in nineteen, in the 1940s, you know, there were four different movie theaters right here in, in downtown Chino. And downtown Chino was really a destination for people in the area for entertainment. And repeatedly in community outreach throughout this process, we've heard a strong community interest from current residents in seeing a vibrant downtown with more options for shopping and dining and entertainment. Now, within this area, which is shown on the, on the screen here, extending from Riverside down Central to, to Chino Avenue, there are some underutilized properties, commercial properties on Central Avenue, but really, it's the city that's the major landowner. And that gives the city more leverage about what kind of development happens, on what timescale, on what timeframe than in other areas of the city where land is owned privately. And so, building on this, building on the Civic Center master plan and listening to what the community has said, the vision for downtown is to make downtown Chino a focal point for civic, cultural, and community life anchored by its charming historic buildings, the Civic Center, and a host of thriving restaurants, shops, and entertainment venues in a walkable environment. To turn this vision into, into reality, the strategy would be for the city to partner with a commercial developer to attract a lively mix of, of new retail shops and restaurants to the downtown area. The city could also lease some land, some, for residential development and use the revenue stream generated from that lease to fund a new theater or an auditorium or, or events in the downtown area. Now, this was, this concept was strongly supported in the community. Our workshop attendees and the people who took the online survey supported the concept at about 88%. And then additionally, was also strongly favored in the statistical survey of voters. You'll see here, 75% of the, of the people surveyed, the voters surveyed, were in favor of the concept. And that's true, doesn't matter which party they are affiliated with, whether it's Republican, Democrat, or independent, they supported this concept. Additionally, the, the statistical survey also asked people another question about whether they thought there'd been too much growth in Chino in recent years, and people who, who said they thought there'd been too much growth in Chino also supported this concept. So really broad support for this concept across the board. In order to implement this concept, the general plan would create a new downtown land use designation that would permit a range of, a mix of uses across this wider area that you see here in red. The precise use that's allowed on any given parcel would be controlled by the zoning. And that's important because housing is not currently allowed here, and it would only be allowed with a successful Measure M vote. But then the zoning would further define sub-districts within this area. So for example, it could create a downtown core centered on D Street and Seventh Street, where you see the, the blue arrows there, and really focus new shops, restaurants, and mixed-use buildings in that core. It could also create a civic district within this wider area for civic uses, a residential mixed-use area, and a commercial office area. Design standards for the area would really emphasize historic preservation and, and seek to cultivate a small-town character. And then, as I mentioned, because housing is, is not allowed on most properties in the site, in order to, in, Measure M vote would be required to, to permit housing on, on more properties. Additionally, to support this land use concept, we're proposing a variety of streetscape improvements. Key among these would be widening D Street between Sixth Street and Central Avenue to allow for angled parking right in front of where the new shops and, and services would go and potentially sidewalk dining as well. Seventh Street would be extended all the way through to Chino Avenue as envisioned in the Civic Center master plan. And then Chino Avenue would be redesigned as a two-lane roadway with angled parking right up against where the, where the Civic Center is now. High-visibility crosswalks and paving treatments, like you see in the photo here, would be installed at key locations to improve walkability and pedestrian safety. And street trees would be planted throughout to really, not only to provide shade in the summertime, but also to help build the, the character and the, and the ambiance of the place. Parking, a comprehensive parking management strategy is really an essential component of this concept. And so that would involve building one or more parking structures, perhaps along Chino Avenue. As I said, providing angled parking right in the, in the core along D Street and Seventh. And generally promoting a park-once policy. Inevitably, people are going to come from all over Chino, they're maybe even going to come from other communities, but we want them, when they arrive downtown, to park once and walk while they're downtown. And then another key component of this strategy has to do with local business incentives. Now, of course, the downtown has to have a balance of recognizable name, shops and restaurants to attract people, but one thing we heard very strongly from the community was a, was a desire for small local businesses. And so we've identified some incentives that can help attract those small local businesses and make sure that the downtown retains a distinctive Chino flavor. Those incentives would include, for example, reducing or eliminating parking requirements for small businesses. So for example, a business that, that uses less than 500 square feet might get a reduction or exemption. And parking can cost, can count for as much as 15% of project costs, and so that's a big financial incentive for small businesses. Additionally, another incentive would be to provide streamlined entitlements or design review for small local businesses, and also to offer business startup support, help them connect with, with lenders, or help them with business licensing and that kind of thing. So that in a nutshell is our first concept, and I'll pause there to see if you have questions or comments about that one.
Okay. Kevin?
One comment or question that I would have, I think I want to hear it.
Check, check. There we go. Thank you very much. One comment or question that I would have is, under the Community Services umbrella, Parks and Recreation, there's the Teen Advisory Committee, and you may have already done so, but I think that checking with them when the time comes to see what type of amenities they would like in the downtown core would be very useful. I know that many years back, they put together their own survey, surveyed their peers in their age group, and provided a lot of great information on what they would want to see. And one thing that they said at that time was that they would like to see more entertainment for teenagers, that they, they can have something to do in town here in the city of Chino. So I'd just like to add that, perhaps, perhaps check with the Teen Advisory Committee as well in the future on what they would like to see in way of amenities in the area. Thank you.
Good idea. Any comments from the audience on the downtown section? Okay, thank you.
Great. So, I'll move on. Our next area is the Riverside and Central corridors. And you can see on the, you can see on the map here, we're really talking about the, the central corridors extending south from the 60 freeway to Riverside and Riverside east from, from Central Avenue. So these two corridors are really important commercial corridors in Chino, and they're entryways into the city. Today, the corridors feature a mix of commercial and residential uses. However, there are several mid-sized shopping centers along both streets with high vacancy rates that have struggled to attract new tenants in recent years. Now, Chino residents and outreach have put a, a high priority on revitalizing these corridors and attracting new uses to serve community needs. One, one barrier to redevelopment or revitalization of the sites has to do with property ownership patterns, though. So sometimes there are multiple parcels within a given shopping center that are owned by different people, and that makes it difficult to coordinate redevelopment of any one shopping center. That's one factor. Another factor is that some of these properties have been owned by the same family for generations, and they may have very low debt obligations. And that means that they could be happy with a, with a modest revenue stream from the existing businesses, and they're not necessarily pushed to invest a lot of money in, in the revitalization. So those are important factors that we kept in mind in developing this concept. Additionally, another consideration, oops, another consideration has to do with the high rate of pedestrian and bicycle-involved collisions on both Riverside and Central. You can see it in a, a little bit in a map there, but they're real hotspots for, for those collisions. And particularly on Riverside, one of the factors that plays into that is that there's a large number of alleyways and driveways that enter into Riverside. And the more, the more alleyways and driveways there are, there are more cars turning, and the more, the higher the chance there is of collisions. And there's also no bicycle facility on, on either of the roads today. So that's one factor to consider. And another, another factor is that the northern part of the city is projected to have a deficit of parkland in the future. And so thinking about creative ways to create outdoor spaces and gathering spaces, kids' play areas, that kind of thing is another consideration that went into this concept. And so the vision here is to foster attractive, human-scaled, mixed-use development that contributes to local character and enhances small-town sense of place along these key segments of Riverside and Central. And so the idea is to promote attractive street lighting and, you know, banners, flower boxes, but also to hold pop-up events, promote outdoor seating, and even kids' play areas. Community feedback from, from our workshops and online indicated strong support for these concepts. Interestingly, in the voter survey, the statistical voter survey, this was the number-one top-supported concept. You can see that 80% of Chino voters polled were in favor of this concept, with only 14 opposed. And so to turn this vision into reality, the general plan would create a new boulevard mixed-use designation that would promote a wide range of retail and restaurant, commercial office, but also hotel and motel, public and residential uses throughout the corridor. Again, it would be, the designation would be very specific that it's the zoning that controls what use is allowed on any specific site. But the, the housing overlays, the affordable housing overlay and the mixed-use overlay do apply to some parcels in the area, and so they are already, they will already start to contribute to a wider mix of uses. This concept involves several incentives to, to try and spur revitalization in the area. The designation and the zoning would permit a range of floor area ratio from 0.3 to 0.6. And so a property owner who wants, a property owner would have the right to develop at 0.3 by right, but if they wanted to go higher up that range, it would need to be in exchange for, in, in exchange for community benefits and outdoor amenities. So for example, the zoning could establish different tiers. For example, one tier might involve providing simpler amenities like landscaping or outdoor seating or additional EV chargers. And for that, you'd get a little more FAR, but if you wanted to go all the way up to the maximum of, of 0.6 FAR, well then you would need to provide top-tier amenities like a pocket park, for example, or a kids' play area onsite. And then additionally, the zoning would also permit for the transfer of excess FAR between different parcels in the area. So for example, if one property owner might be happy with just having 0.3 FAR, and they didn't want to do any more, but they would be able to sell their excess FAR up to 0.6 to another property owner who wanted to, to do more. And this, this idea would be, the intent of this is to incentivize or catalyze redevelopment in these areas to try and address those property owner, ownership patterns that have been a barrier in the past. Similar strategies have been used in other California communities, San Diego and Los Angeles, I think also Thousand Oaks. This strategy has been used successfully. And then a third strategy would be to establish a business improvement district to fund amenities and events in the area. This would function something like an HOA, but for businesses, and it would generate funds that could be used to construct the streetscape improvements or onsite amenities to fund maintenance or to fund advertising and promotional events or, or even events in the area. Streetscape improvements would also be an important component of this concept. It really, the streetscape improvements would be done to, to support the desired character for the area. For example, current standards have the landscaping between the property line and the sidewalk, as you can see in the photo on the left, but flipping that so that the landscaping goes between the traffic and the pedestrians would help to create a more walkable environment and be more suitable for, for outdoor seating. Additionally, standards would also promote branded streetlights, flower boxes, and banners throughout the area to really give it a, a unique and distinctive character. The plan would also call for, the plan would also call for the inclusion of a buffered bicycle lane provided along Riverside, along both sides, in order to improve access and address those roadway safety issues. The 2025 general plan calls for widening Riverside to six lanes to create a 120-foot, 120-foot right-of-way, which would be from the green line to the green line on the photo. However, as you can see, that future right-of-way runs through some existing buildings and some properties. And the initial traffic modeling indicates that that whole right-of-way will, will not likely be needed. And so that gives the city some options for accommodating that bike lane and wider sidewalks along Riverside. A buffered bike lane typically requires about 10 feet of right-of-way, and so one option would be to look on the south side, to take some right-of-way on the south side of Riverside and redesign the street with a five-foot buffered bicycle lane on either side. Another option could be, you can see that there's a, right now, there's a center-turn lane. It's about 12 feet wide. That 12-foot right-of-way could be repurposed and redesign the roadway to, to provide the, the buffered bike lane on both sides without any taking of, of additional right-of-way. No decision has been made on, on which way to go, but this would be a concept that we'd want to explore further with property owners and, and, and work out a more detailed design to bring it back. But we'd like to hear your feedback on, on these potential options. And then a final aspect of streetscape improvements for the Riverside and Central area would be to activate some, some existing alleyways. As I mentioned, along Riverside, there's a number of alleyways closely spaced together, and one or two of them could be closed off just at the end to create outdoor seating or even a pocket park-type environment. Now, the city owns these alleyways, and so the city could offer easements as an incentive to create those kind of pocket parks or outdoor spaces. And a strategy like this has been used successfully in, in Long Beach, as well as some other communities. So that is an overview of the Riverside and Central concept, and I'm happy to hear your thoughts.
Karen has some?
Thank you, Mr. Hill. I just have some general comments. I do think that Central Avenue, the entire Central Avenue corridor, corridor from Phillips to actually down to the 71 is important to us. Most of the people that travel through our community, at one point, will travel on one of two streets. It'll be Riverside Drive or Central Avenue, or perhaps Euclid Avenue. So I think this is a vital component to this, to this plan, as well as Riverside Drive, not just through this area, but from when you enter down in the area of, like Roswell and that area there. They're vital to, you know, just branding our community coming in there. I know a lot of that area on Riverside Drive is still in the county area, but, you know, is in our sphere. So I'm happy to see that. The Riverside Drive bike lane concept, I think I'm not in favor, just, just a comment, of removing the center-turning lane in that area, just because of how traffic has traditionally flowed through there. It's, it's vital to the success of keeping Riverside Drive moving. I don't think a lot of people would say you feel unnecessarily delayed on Riverside Drive in either direction on any given day of the week because of how it's designed right now. But I do think if we approached residents with the, the bike buffer, because Riverside Drive probably would have more bicycle traffic on it than it does, but it doesn't because of its configuration, that people are riding on it anyway, which is contributing to these collisions. With the, with the right-of-way, I, I think one of the things that they presently experience even on trash day is not even be able to put their trash out. They're, they're actually sticking it sometimes into the lane of traffic because it's so narrow there with the, with the bike buffer. It may provide them with just a little bit more ability to do that. There are only other options to put it on a very aging, you know, older sidewalk there, which most people try not to do in that area. But I think people would welcome some of those improvements, both for bikeability and walkability for, for several different reasons. It would also allow us to, this is a heavily walked area of our community where you're, where you're looking at, between people getting to commodities here, between Central and, you know, to Oaks and Magnolia, plus with students coming across Riverside Drive to Chino High School. So anything that we could do to provide that, that safe access and, and clean up a lot of what I would call, you know, the jaggedness of it through the bike buffer, I think would just be a, a big improvement to this area, both aesthetically and for people to use it in years to come, so it can function better for us in the future.
On Riverside Drive, comments, with my, I don't see us, why Riverside not necessarily would take off, or, or businesses, which would be extremely expensive, and in some cases, actually, have those businesses.
Well, they're doing, millions and millions of dollars, they condemn businesses. While I agree we need to improve it, I don't know how we can practically do it without putting businesses out of business and condemning the whole property.
That's going to be really challenging, but I don't think, I don't think, I don't know the landscape concept, I don't realize.
I don't realize. I love the landscape concept. I think that is really nice. The picture that you show of M.K. Smith right there, that would certainly be an improvement to the area. So, interesting concepts, but I do think the Central Avenue corridor does need to go northbound also, to improve and not just go from the freeway south. Comments from the commission? None? Okay. Kurt, did you have anything?
No, I was actually just curious. You had mentioned the Riverside Drive corridor extending eastbound from Central. Was that over to Euclid Avenue, or what, what was the border over there?
Yeah, I think Benson is the eastern limit of where, where the land use change would, would occur, and that's because of where the vacant or underutilized sites were clustered. And so, as, as, as I think I mentioned in the, in the comment, we really tried to focus on areas where change is foreseeable, and those clusters of vacant and underutilized parcels are most likely to see redevelopment over the next ten to twenty years, and so, we wanted to focus community attention and the plan on those areas where it can really present a vision for what that change should look like.
And then west of Central, along Riverside Drive, I noted that there were a couple of areas, probably over between Montevista and Yorba.
Correct.
But did you go further west than that as well in, in your study?
We, so, in the sphere, so outside the, the city limit, there are, there is, again, a cluster of vacant and underutilized parcels, and I have a slide on, on approach for, for that in the future as well.
Any comments? Any comments from our audience? Okay, Chris now has a comment. Come on up to the lectern so that we can hear you, please.
I think the projection and display that you've offered us, there's one thing missing. What's the timeline? That's one thing. And, and what's very similar is, what you, your ideas are very similar to what SCAG has projected for the future for many cities. So, it's important with the idea of having more bicycle areas, walking areas, even mobile later on, shared riding. So, that's, that's very good. And SCAG projected this many, many years ago, and one of their projects, but what is the timeline to begin in, in what?
Would you like me to answer? Sure. Actually, my, my very first slide was, showed the overall timeline, but we, so, what we're looking for tonight is a, is a thumbs up to move forward with Phase Three. If we do that, then we'd roll up our sleeves and do the technical modeling, prepare the, the draft plan with all the policies, prepare the EIR, and that would be released early in, in next year, and then adoption hearings would follow after a forty-five-day public comment period.
So, Mr. Hill, if we were to proceed, like, you know, with this, or a version of it later tonight, like, I guess my question is, like, to the mayor's point, if we are trying to improve some of these things along Riverside Drive, and we study it, are there areas where, like, you know, from a circulation perspective, we, let's say we could put this walkable or shared lane here, or bike lane in here, but there's areas where we choke it, where it chokes or we can't get it, do we, is there ways for us to turn lanes into shared, you know, like, sharrows, and then, you know, the bicyclist comes in and they come back out in a, in a safer route? I mean, you know, to the mayor's point, we may not be able to get all of it, but if we can get eighty or ninety percent of it, it improves a lot of, a lot of livability in these areas or different uses in the future. So, are those, is that, is that what you guys do? Is that what?
Yes. I think you've hit on it exactly. As you know well, the right-of-way really varies. It's very jagged. And so, there's not going to be a one-size-fits-all solution. It'll be sort of a combination of, of things along the corridor.
I think that's innovative and definitely improvement moving into the future for us, so, thank you.
So, yeah, my comments would be towards the active alleyways, you know, concept that you presented. I, I think that's innovative, and I think if, that's even something, right, we can, we can possibly start doing now, right, at Council Direction, at least just to kind of get it going and somewhere in the downtown area. So, I think that's just something for, you know, the council to consider and for staff to consider, and, you know, even open to comments from the commission. Now, the bicycle connections you mentioned and, right, some of that space that's in front of a lot of those commercial properties, some comments I've heard from, you know, some community members as well, it's just the idea of, because currently, our, our general plan has four six lanes on Riverside Drive, and, you know, just understanding that, you know, or asking ourselves, is that reachable? And if the answer is no, then, you know, the idea of changing the general plan, at least in terms of, in terms of the six lanes and, you know, making it, you know, less lanes. So, just some comments on that, and, you know.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for that. Again, as part of Phase Three, we are going to do more technical modeling and really try and dialing these concepts a lot, a lot more. What we're trying to get today is confirmation that, you know, this is a broad direction we should move forward with.
There, there, there. There definitely are buildings along Riverside Drive that are historic, that we know we're not going to tear down, so going to six lanes is just not doable in some areas, but it will be interesting to see what you come up with. Thank you.
So, I can't remember, was Mayor or Councilmember Comstock, but one of you just asked about north of sixty. Well, here it is. Where, the next area is the Philadelphia and Central corridors. And so, this area, as you can see, is north of the sixty freeway along Central and Philadelphia. Here, again, we have several larger shopping centers that are underutilized with high rates of vacancy that have struggled to attract new tenants in recent years. In, in fact, the parcels that have the highest vacancy rate are the ones that have the regional commercial designation, and that designation in the general plan has the narrowest, most limited range of uses. However, you know, proximity to the freeway and proximity to Ontario International Airport is a great asset for this area that could potentially be leveraged. So, here, the vision for this area is to revitalize these underutilized regional shopping centers around Philadelphia and Central, support existing businesses, and position Chino as a regional destination for festivals, culture, and sporting events. And to turn this vision into reality, the strategy would be for the city to work to attract a privately-run regional sports facility, perhaps, like a, an aquatic center or a volleyball center, and to the, to one of the larger sites in the area, to add digital signage and wayfinding that could advertise these events and attract visitors, whether, whether they're passing through Chino or, or live in the city. Adding that new sports facility to the site could help to create demand for a new hotel. If you think about visiting out-of-town teams, would need, you know, coming to the, to the sports facility, they would need a place to stay, and then coupled with the proximity to Ontario Airport, there's really potential for creating a demand for a new hotel. And the final part of this concept would be to construct a multi-use trail along the flood control channel that runs just north of, of the sixty freeway with connections into some of those shopping centers as well. Workshop attendees and people who took our online survey supported this concept quite strongly. Seventy-nine percent of our survey respondents were in favor. The statistical survey found solid support at sixty-three percent as well. To implement this concept, the general plan would create a regional mixed-use designation. This would essentially expand the regional commercial, the range of uses permitted under the regional commercial designation. Again, the, the zoning would control what's, what particular uses is allowed on any given site. But as you can see from this map, there are, the affordable housing overlay and the mixed-use housing overlay apply on some sites in the area, and so, they're already helping to diversify the mix of uses allowed. Again, this strategy would involve incentives to try and catalyze redevelopment and revitalization of these centers. Similar to, to the Riverside and Central areas, the, the general plan would set a range of permitted FAR, and property owners would have, would be able to get to the, at the low end of the range by right, but if they wanted more, it would be in exchange for onsite amenities and, and community benefits. Same strategy. Additionally, another incentive for redevelopment could be to reduce parking standards or allow shared, shared parking agreements, shared parking functions when there's different, when different users of the site have different needs at different time of day, then you don't need to construct parking for both of those users. They can share the same, share, share the same space, and so, that's a strategy. Again, because parking can, can account for as much as fifteen percent of the total project cost, that's a real incentive for, for redevelopment. And, oh, and I, you can see here, the green lines on the bottom is where the multi-use trail would run with a entry point into the Chino Town Square. There's actually a, the city has a, the city has a utility easement that runs between the two shopping centers, and there could be an option to stripe a bicycle lane there to allow for bicycles to move through this, through the site without having to compete with fast-moving traffic on some of the bigger streets. And this concept really fits well with the, the theme of an active, healthy Chino that's described in the guiding principles. Of course, we have building the, the new multi-use trail and the straight bicycle lane, the aquatics complex, but there's also demand for medical office space in the area, and we can see there's one project that's constructed recently as well. So, that's a quick overview of the Philadelphia and Central concept. Happy to take any questions or comments.
Council comments?
I like this idea a lot. I, I have a hard time envisioning it, what it would look like right now, because it's, you know, obviously mostly just a visionary statement or idea, you know, that we're looking towards, but I do like it. And I would not have thought that there is a demand for hotel space locally, but up until recently, when I had to help try and get a person a hotel for a couple nights here recently, I was surprised when I actually went out to find a room that a lot of our local hotels are, are full. I don't know if it's because of, you know, housing needs or different things, but I went to a local hotel, it was already full for the night, and actually went down to their, our new hotel on Ramona Avenue towards Tuna Hills Parkway, and they were like at ninety percent occupancy. So, I could see the, the need for both if we were to do something innovative, but I do like, I like the idea of having a, you know, more activity there. It also helps kind of make up for some of our shortage of park space and promote an active lifestyle, and I think with as, as popular as club and youth sports are and different things and swimming, I think, I think these things would be utilized quite heavily. Most of our parks and our, our space right now, if you go through Chino on any given day of the week or on the weekend, we don't have enough programming space. So, I think this would probably be a welcome addition to our community in, in some form. So, thank you.
Speaking about the, the bicycle trail along the flood control channel, how would that work? We need to get permission from the state in order to acquire that land, or how does that work?
Yeah, the concept is actually in the bicycle master plan right now, and so, this picks up on what's in the bicycle master plan now. The, the twist is that what we're proposing is a, is an entry point into the, into the malls. I wonder if Dennis, you might be able to answer the question about ownership?
Thank you, councilmembers. So, yes, along the flood coat, uh, channel property, that's all controlled by Samaritan County Flood Control District. So, yeah, when, whenever we're proposing these bike facilities in other people's right-of-way, we would need to work with them on how that looks. They have that right-of-way a lot for maintenance of those facilities, so as we're proposing to repurpose some of that for recreational use or active transportation use, we'd have to work with them on how that would work. It's been successful in a lot of places. The, the one I'm, you know, most familiar with is down off of the ninety-one, right there, off of Imperial Drive and everything. You got a nice, wide facility right along, it goes right along the Santa Ana River and all that, so. There's, there's a lot of examples all over Southern California where that's been pretty successful. Chino has a lot of flood control channels in it that provide regional connectivity, and so, to leverage that for bike connectivity or multi-use connectivity would definitely be a strategy we'd want to proceed with.
And I, I could see that happening throughout the entire city, like you'd mentioned, along the flood control channels. We had a, a lot of those. Now, up along the, the freeway, the barriers that would be required because it sits above the freeway itself, how, how big would that have to be? I, I, I'm just curious, you said you've seen this before. What have they proposed, or what have, what have you seen out there?
It, it's a mix. Sometimes there's a, a physical barrier, like a, you know, as, as simple as a chain-link fence usually between the freeway or, or a channel, but it can be as, as extravagant or as minimal as, as we'd like to see. And then working with flood control to, to make those visions a reality, and then how do we repurpose that? There would absolutely have to be, though, some kind of physical barrier, because we don't want people falling off of the channel and, or falling off the trail and into the channel, or even have access to it to begin with. So, yeah.
Go ahead. Dennis, I think this is an area that, like you said, it's a model that's not new to anybody. It exists in Orange County and LA County. It's just something I think we've, haven't prioritized and have probably fallen behind on, so I'm happy to see us talking about this, right? It's, it's out there, it's not anything new. It's something that we need to get our minds around because of how many flood control channels we have, and would just give our community more, more bikeable and recreation space that's going to be desperately needed in the future, you know, as the community continues to grow and develop, so I think it's a great idea.
Dennis, have we looked at Cypress Channel?
Yes, in fact, Cypress Channel is also in our, our current master plan, bike pedestrian master plan. So, all of them, the Chino Creek, Cypress Channel, all of those, taking a look at all of those, those built, maintained, manufactured flood control channels. I believe almost all of them in, in our current master plan have those identified, and little foreshadowing for my part of the presentation later, we'll look at further analyzing that and maybe coming up with even some design standards of how those might look at as part of, of this process with the general plan update.
Great, thank you. Chris, do you have anything? Not yet. Commission, comments? Kevin?
Just to state that I believe that the regional mixed use is a great strategy for many areas of our city, especially the Central Corridor, that north section up by Philadelphia, and so, I certainly welcome that idea. But to also share that, yeah, the incentives are greatly needed for development in that area and those property owners and the future developers, but I'm not a huge fan of reduced parking incentives. I understand the value of that, but I feel at times you're just taking an issue from one area and moving it to another area, because those cars are going to park somewhere, so I would share that. And then additionally, the sports facilities would bring great value. My son plays multiple sports and is in basketball, travel ball, and most often, when we are going to a basketball tournament, we are going out of our area, and these are local organizations or sports clubs that I'm sure would love to host clinics and tournaments here in our city. So, just, I think, a great plan, and again, that regional mixed use is a phenomenal opportunity for our city overall, so thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Okay, any members of the audience would like to make any comments on this part? Okay.
Right, so our final focused area is in the south of the city, along Euclid between Bickmore and Pine. This is a large vacant parcel, a property that you can see, it's outlined there in, in red, as I say, along, along Euclid between Bickmore and Pine. It was originally envisioned in the preserve, specific plan as a regional retail center, but since two thousand and three, when, when that plan was adopted, the world has changed, the rise of internet shopping, and e-commerce has changed the landscape for physical retail, and as a result, that parcel has remained vacant for, for more than twenty years. In this current climate, new retail and especially commercial, regional retail faces real financial feasibility challenges, but one opportunity for Chino is that there is strong market demand for light industrial space. And this means that because of the size of the site, there's a possibility to, to leverage that strong demand for industrial space to bring the retail in, to the area, to allow for both uses. And because the, if the property owner knows that they're going to, they're going to get a revenue stream from the light industrial space, then they're more likely to, to, to proceed with the retail as well. And of course, the Pine Avenue connector that would connect Pine Avenue with, with the seventy-one freeway really supports the further vitality of retail on the site, especially if you start to think about commuters who may be, who may be coming along Pine and up Euclid to perhaps the new development in Ontario Ranch or, or beyond. Those people are potential patrons for new retail and would support the viability of this concept. So, there is, this has been done before. There is a, a, a commercial center called The Merge in Eastvale, which does a in Eastvale, which does exactly this, it has a mid-sized shopping mall with retail and restaurants along the, the street frontage, and behind it are industrial buildings that are screened from view and designed to match, um, the architectural style of the other buildings, you can see some photos there. Um, so there's a separation, um, and architectural mirroring and, and screening as well. This concept, uh, essentially, as I say, tries to leverage the market demand for light industrial manufacturing spaces and capitalize on the, on the city's location, um, eh, in order to, um, uh, to realize the vision for retail in the south of the city. The idea would be to attract, um, commercial retail spaces with, uh, restaurants and shops along the Euclid frontage and to have, um, light industrials, um, or manufacturing uses behind. They could be, uh, something like a brewery or a bakery or a commercial kitchen, those are options as well. This concept got really good reception, uh, at our community workshops, and seventy-four percent of the people who took the online survey supported it. Notably, there were a number of, um, people who live in the preserve who had, a couple of people who had, uh, actually lived adjacent to The Merge, um, who really, really liked the concept and thought it would be a, a good idea for Chino. The statistical, uh, survey also indicated strong support, seventy, or sixty-nine percent here. Uh, one thing I want to point out is that fourteen percent of the respondents on the, on the statistical voter survey said they don't know, and that's probably because the voter survey looked at all areas of Chino, and people who, you know, live in the north and don't come down to the south maybe didn't know about this site, and it wasn't really on their radar. So sixty-nine percent, uh, looks even stronger when you consider that fourteen percent of the respondents really didn't have an opinion. So here, the concept would be to create a new employment mixed-use designation that would apply to the whole of the site. The, uh, that designation would require, um, would establish a minimum amount of retail, commercial retail that, that would need to go along the Euclid frontage. And it would establish, uh, again, it would establish that range of FAR from point three up to point six, um, and, uh, so the lower end of the range would be available to the property owner by right, um, but to get up to the maximum, they would need to provide those onsite amenities, um, which could include outdoor dining and, uh, pause points and gathering spaces, even, um, pocket parks onsite. And then the designation would also permit, um, light industrial uses at up to point six FAR, um, with a stipulation on build, maximum building size, but only if the commercial retail is also provided on the site. So you can't have the light industrial without the commercial retail uses. And then additionally, the, this new employment mixed-use designation would require that a project proponent, um, submit and have approved a site plan demonstrating adequate buffering and separation between the uses on the site, but also, um, the adjacent uses, because the Marquez property is, um, immediately to the east, um, uh, which is planned for residential development. Key to this concept would be establishing good neighbor policies and standards, and so these are essential for, um, making sure that the, um, that truck traffic associated with the, with the light industrial uses, um, um, would be respectful and, um, and try and make those uses as compatible as possible with the, with the surrounding uses, and so that would be, um, you know, it would have governed where driving, uh, driveways and loading docks would be located, it would prohibit truck idling, a whole list of, of requirements that would go into the zone, the zoning and need to be enforced. Additionally, uh, the standards would also, um, uh, facilitate access, um, through the site to the, to the shops and restaurants for, um, neighboring residents. And so this means a family could go on foot or by bicycle through the site to get to the shops and residences, and this was a feedback that we got from some of those, um, residences, uh, residents of Chino now who formerly lived close to Chino, and one of the things we heard from them is that, um, in Eastvale, they, uh, they weren't able to get, even though they live right beside The Merge, they weren't able to get on the property and walk with the kids to go to a restaurant, they had to get in a car and go all the way around, and so having that access through the site was really important, uh, for the, for the local residents. And then a third component of this, um, of the standards would, would be working with, uh, OC Flood Control and the Army Corps, um, to create publicly accessible open space on the southern portion of the site. And as, I wanted to point out that, um, the site is, uh, constrained by, um, flood control regulations, um, it's a little bit hard to see, but the red line on the bottom south of Pine is the five-five-six, which is the current spillway elevation for the Prado Dam, and the blue is the hundred-year floodplain, but the yellow line that, that passes through the, the northern portion of the site is the future spillway. The, so the Army Corps, um, has done some spillway modifications, and as a result of that, um, the, the potential, uh, flood extent extends now into this site. And so what we don't know at this stage is, is how, how impacted the site is and what the, what the full development potential is. We had some initial conversations with OC Flood, and they indicated, um, that it could be that, um, uh, the Army Corps might be open to, um, to allowing some sort of development in exchange for, for channeling, um, but we need to, uh, to, we need to explore these conversations further and understand what portion of the site is developable, what the development options are before we can, before we can dial in this concept. So I'll leave it open for questions.
Andrew, um, when it comes to determining, uh, the buildable portion of this site, who is going to actually do that study?
That, that is a good question. I don't think we, that's maybe too much detail to get into for the general plan, but at least, um, having an understanding of, uh, the Army Corps', um, the Army Corps', uh, plans essentially, whether, whether they're, they're going to seek to acquire any parcel that touches the yellow line, or whether they're looking, what sort of easement they're looking for, what the, what their, what their standards are around development. That, I think we can understand in order to bake this concept in. Does that answer?
I know there are areas where they allow, um, excavating areas to offset so that you can build in part of it, but it would be challenging to zone this property and market it if we don't know what's actually going to be allowed. So to move forward on the general plan, are we going to have just kind of a tentative overlay on this, this land with notes that it's to be determined?
No, we would need to know that, that, that it is viable, um, it, um, and we would get that through further conversations with OC Flood and the Army Corps, um, and, uh, at this stage, what we're looking for is confirmation whether this concept is, is worth pursuing further, um, to see if, if a substantial portion of the site can in fact be developed, and if this concept would be viable with a developable area, um, then we would want, um, to move forward if the commission and the council, um, would support that.
That is, is very interesting, I think it's very positive, especially with the possibility that might develop, but at the same time, I don't want to hold up the general plan. I mean, we have taken a long time to get where we are right now, we need to move forward, there's a lot of pending changes, uh, and, and development that could happen that, that are held in abeyance right now until we get this general plan finished, so I don't want to hold up the general plan for this area if we can't get that resolved. That's my personal feeling. Okay, council comments? Karen?
I think the plan presents a lot of opportunities because this is another area that I think is a focal point for the city, it's an entry point from, uh, northbound Euclid Avenue into our, into our community, uh, not just into the city of Chino, but also to the preserve. There's a lot of opportunity there in even the super, the county supervisors pursuing a lot of different entertainment that we were talking about earlier, potentially, we just rezoned some of this area to allow for different forms of entertainment. It's my understanding that there's new owner of, uh, the Prado Golf Course that has vision and, you know, hopefully to bring, you know, improvements and maybe even different forms of recreation to the Prado Golf Course, as well as I think, um, should all the stars align with this plan, Mr. Hill, I think it would be, um, very popular for people who live east of it to be able to get into the, some of that area. I, I think both are needed, you know, a, a nice focal point for the entry to our community, as an entry point to a, a segment of our community called the Preserve. There is, you know, there is a need for people working in these areas as these areas, um, as some of this commercial continues to develop in this area for people to e, even be able to go and enjoy lunch breaks or different things for themselves and people just passing through our city, so. I think it's positive as long as the stars are to align with all the entities, and it's, if you haven't had to deal with this, all the entities that are involved, it is very challenging, so, even for current development that's on, on the wait, on the waiting line right now, so.
Commission comments?
To piggyback on what the mayor said and the council member com stock, uh, would it be viable to have a, an option set in place so that if the Army Corps of Engineers, et cetera, doesn't come through in a timely manner, we have a second option that perhaps is just open space for that, that might, uh, provide for what we want to do in way of entertainment, um, you make it look better for our entry point, et cetera, and just add open space to that, would that be, uh, perhaps an option?
It could be, I think, I'd want to think about, um, uh, a taking, right? Uh, if we, if you're downzoning and, and taking away the development potential from the property owners, I would just want to be conscious of that. I think, but at the same time, we absolutely don't want to oversell the property or promise something that can't be delivered. So I think we really need to keep the focus on discussions and, and see what the development potential is there. I think maybe the better option might be if there is some envelope of development potential there to apply this, a, and the concept is feasible, to apply the designation just, but just make very clear in the general plan what the, what the constraints and the parameters are.
And that would be feasible even without the Army Corps of Engineers approval?
I, I don't think they need to, well, they need to, I, what they need to tell us is what, you know, what are the, what are the rules of the game, and, and, and we need to understand that better and through conversations, and OC Flood is, uh, initial conversations have been helpful, and they've, they've made some suggestions about, you know, how to, how to approach this, um, and, and so we have another conversation lined up with them, and hopefully they're going to help introduce us to some people at, at Army Corps so we can really get some more clarity on this.
Excellent, because you're probably aware, and I know our council is fully aware, that we have projects that have been delayed for years based on Army Corps of Engineers, so, just thought I'd bring that to light, thank you.
Yep.
Karen? Army Corps is extremely hard to deal with, and, and we have a, a major project right now that Kevin kind of spoke to that's been held up for years trying to get them to okay a project that, that should have been built a number of years ago. Any other comments from the commission? No? Yet Lisa? Okay.
In regards to the light industrial that would potentially go on that property, um, you did mention a size restriction, and I think that's a very important component. Um, as a resident of the Preserve, we have, you know, industrial right on the other side of that, that's very large, um, and residents, I think, don't want any more large buildings, so definitely some size restrictions, and I think we would be good with it. Thank you.
Comments from the audience on this portion? Okay, you seen?
Okay, and then for the final, um, segment of the presentation, I wanted to give you an overview of, of some other areas of the city outside of these key areas. Um, and so, one important point is that, um, outside of the key areas, the general plan land use designations, um, would remain essentially the same. The general plan is going to seek to, outside of these change areas that I've been talking about, the general plan is going to, uh, seek to, uh, preserve the existing built form and enhance neighborhood quality of life, and it's going to support continued implementation of the Preserve specific plan. But there are a number of, um, very targeted, uh, changes to land use designations, I would call them like cleanup, um, to make, to make sure they better reflect existing conditions, um, and so they're shown, uh, on the map in, on the maps in your packet and on, on this, um, site, uh, on this, uh, series of slide here. And then additionally beside it, you see where those, um, four new designations that I talked about would go, and you'll see that the, um, regional mixed-use designation would also be applied to, uh, the Spectrum Center, because it has very similar properties in terms of, uh, the size, um, and the, and the uses. So overall, uh, the, Chino is projected to add about twelve thousand new homes, about ninety-one hundred and fifty new jobs by two thousand and forty-five, this is in, based on the regional projections. Most of that growth would be focused in the Preserve, about, of fifty-plus percent of that, of the homes and new jobs would go in, in the Preserve, consistent with the Preserve specific plan, and elsewhere, the jobs would, the new jobs and housing would be primarily focused in those key areas that I've been talking about, based on the housing overlays that have, um, opened up possibilities for housing on more sites, um, and the proposed, uh, land use and zoning that we've been discussing here today. Um, and so, um, in phase three, we'll be doing build-out projections, um, based on these numbers, um, and using them as the basis for, uh, technical modeling of traffic, noise, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions and, and utility demand. And, uh, I also wanted to talk about, uh, an annexation strategy for, um, parcels in the, in the northern sphere of influence, you can see them in the northwest of the city here, they're shown on the map in purple. So the general plan will include a policy framework to guide future annexations. It'll consider, um, uh, highest and, and best use study of those sites, um, it'll consider future infrastructure needs and a phasing plan, um, to, to guide, uh, future annexations. In the short term, um, staff will continue working with the county to match Chino's land use, uh, to match county land use designations with, um, the, the county, or with the city's land use designations that are applicable in the, in the SOI today, so that as, as projects come, are proposed, uh, while it's still in the county, though, they can be trued up with, um, what the city's expecting. Also, um, the general plan will, will include guidance for reuse of the driving range at Ayala Park. This was a, a, a topic of, um, of out, phase-two outreach, and some of the, the preferred concepts involved, um, creating a, um, a, a container park, um, that could offer food and beverage, um, in the, in the park for, for people on game and event days, and also strong support for, um, a water park in the area. And there's some interesting, uh, cons, uh, concepts too that could go along with this, perhaps, um, you, uh, you could have an elevated deck to take advantage of, um, having nice views from on, um, from on top of some of the new buildings, for example, so the general plan will also be considering, um, providing policy-level guidance for this concept. And then along Euclid Avenue, and here we're talking about Euclid from Riverside south to Edison, um, no land use, no further land use changes are proposed, um, in this area of the city, the, the, um, as part of the housing element, um, process, mixed use and affordable housing overlays were applied to some sites along, along the area, um, in, so no further land use changes are proposed, um, with the general plan. Instead, the standards will focus on view preservation, there's really magnis, magnificent views of the San Gabriel Mountains, and so focusing on setbacks and step backs to make sure that as development happens, those preserve, those views are preserved. And then additionally, um, the general plan will anticipate a, uh, a separated bicycle track along the western side of Euclid, um, to improve north-south connectivity, um, in this area of the city. And then additionally, another concept, um, is for, uh, surplus state property. The city may in the future, um, acquire some property from, uh, from the state across from, uh, across from the airport on Euclid Avenue, and so the, the general plan will, uh, will introduce a concept for an agri, agricultural community if the city does acquire that property in the future. There are successful models of this type of, of community in, here in California, but also in Arizona and Georgia. Some of the key components would include, um, a heritage museum with a working farm on it, a training facility dedicated to sustainable agricultural practices, a farm-to-table restaurant, an event space, um, and other potential commercial opportunities, as well as a range of new homes for, um, for young families here in Chino. Um, and so with that, um, I'll, you can pause for, in a moment, I'll pause for any, uh, questions and comments.
Let's see, um, I just absolutely have to make this comment, and staff will understand it and probably some of the commission members, but when it comes to annexation strategy in the sphere of influence, um, you planners always say best and highest use, I have to tell you, we need balanced growth, not all highest use. So, um, personally, I'll speak from a personal standpoint, I want balanced growth up there, I do not want all stack and pack. We, there are still people who want a pool in their backyard, or a half an acre to do a tennis court, we have neighbors that have tennis courts, so, um, I will not support highest and best use on every inch of land that we have left, so I just have to say that, you'll understand. I have nagged that for years and years. The Ayala Park current driving range, the other need that we get nagged for a lot, Andrew, is a dog park, so if we could work in a section of a dog park in, in that concept, I think it would be extremely popular. I love the entertainment part, the water park part I think would be really good, and a, a viewing type area for people to watch the sports going on, but we really need a dog park too, a lot of people go there to walk their animals. And then Euclid Avenue, I know I've had conversations with Linda about it, the median is supposed to continue all the way down Euclid Avenue, so we also have to be very sensitive to that, and plan for that median as well as bike lanes. Council comments? Chris?
Just going back to, um, the mayor's, the mayor's last comment about, right, being vigilant-
Just going back to the mayor's last comment about, right, being vigilant about the bike lane in the center medium. You know, one concept that I think has been touched on before, but just something to keep in mind is, you know, there's a part of Euclid in Ontario that has like this park space right in the middle, right? And there's a walking show or something like that. But I mean, mixing in some sort of, I'm not sure if it's a bike lane, again, I'm not sure how safe that'll be, but again, just something to keep in mind and trying to use that center medium, you know, mixed use, right? That's a hot button right now. But that's just one comment I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other council comments? Commission?
I just wanted to state about this surplus state property. I know that we were talking about that in the meeting, and I definitely think that hopefully we can acquire that, and that sounds like a really great addition down there to have that. Thanks.
Kevin?
My question is, and I know that this meeting, the focus of this meeting and project was on areas of the city where change is foreseeable. What about areas of the city where change perhaps is not foreseeable? Are we looking at those areas in our current zoning to see if we want to make changes to some of those areas? So for example, what comes to mind is the couple of projects that we've had recently on Yorba Avenue where we're approving industrial and, you know, larger buildings that are going to have more trucks and traffic, et cetera. And at times, we hear from the community that city, I'm sorry, that street, Yorba, is not set up to support that much truck traffic, et cetera. So are we looking at those areas of the city to determine, do we still want the zoning set up the way it is, or do we want to make some changes to where instead of just industrial, per se, perhaps it's light industrial, where it limits the amount of truck traffic or the size of the building, et cetera, on those properties? And that was one question that I had. This is, I think, a great opportunity to look at, obviously, the zoning, et cetera, for the entire city, not just the areas where change is foreseeable. Thank you.
Yep.
An area that I was going to also ask about, there are pocket corners that we have looked at changing. One in particular is the northwest, northwest corner of Euclid and Kimball, changing that corner from commercial so that industrial can go down. So there are different pockets within the community that we have looked at already to consider changes that are outside these big, major changes. I'm assuming those smaller changes are going to move forward.
Right.
Okay. And how will we be reviewing those smaller in the third phase?
Yeah, that'll be brought to you as part of the package of all the land use changes. So just like we do any other general plan map change, that'll be, all those will be included. And the northwest, the south, you think of the southwest corner where the Farmer Boys is, and then will also be changed, and then the northwest, we're looking at that as well.
Right.
And that's included in that slide that you saw there, where there's several key areas where we're just kind of cleaning up some spots where the land use is different or slightly different than to match that, to kind of true those things up.
Like Kevin said too, we've talked about other streets that seem to be problem areas that we've talked about massaging.
Yeah, and I think Dennis is going to get a little bit into some of the traffic modeling and the circulation.
Okay.
They'll also look at that, but all this will be presented and reviewed and given time for comment on those. And to your point, Kevin, just, I think, we also are going to be looking at good neighbor policies to help address some of those issues where there's, you know, some impacts to neighborhoods adjacent to residential and industrial, kind of what we had worked on previously, to kind of clean that up as a part of this as well.
Okay. Karen?
Well, most of the staff was just present in a meeting we attended just a couple of weeks ago about this exact issue that Kevin just brought up. You know, when we talk about the project at Yorba, I mean, you know, a lot of those residences, it's the west of there, Mike just specifically asked that question. Hey, what about trucks? What about this? Because now, you know, 20 years later into our community, as we're more populated, more dense, and some of this zoning and construction is now coming online, we're finding that in a lot of areas, it's not, a lot of our residents that live here don't like it. And we just had to have a hard conversation with some of these residents, like, no, these projects are, you know, this one's coming, and then there's another one coming on the corner, and it's going to create this type of impact to you, not just next door to you, but on the street behind you and throughout the city. So I think Kevin's point is valid. You know, when we look at some of these uses, you know, you know, Mike, that the one that was at County Road in East End was met with a lot of fervor from some of our residents because of what's even happening into the annexation. So I think those are some things that we do need, you know, to think about and consider moving forward. It's, you know, we're not the same community we were 30 years ago, and, you know, we're starting to feel not just choked in by what's happening to us, but also what's happening, you know, in Pomona and the communities around us as well. So I think those are all valid concerns that are raised here tonight that we certainly need to take a look at.
In addition to that, the industry has changed, right? So logistics, manufacturing, we're, for our industrial, we're no longer at 100,000 square foot buildings, we're at a million. And so I think that is a key component as well, that we look at some of our zoning. Hey, initially, when we zoned this as industrial, we foresaw 100,000 square foot building or 200,000, whatever that might be. But now we know that people are looking for 500, 600, and so perhaps we have to take that into consideration moving forward.
But on the flip side of that also, Kevin, is as build-out continues to move eastward, the larger buildings then will be vacated, and that's why years ago, we requested through the Planning Commission that those buildings be divisible. Because the big ones will move further eastward, and then the smaller ones will then move from LA out into this area. So the reverse can also happen. So we need flexibility to accommodate the changing uses as we move forward decade by decade.
Yeah, and much of that will be established in the zoning code, which will come as kind of tandem. That's kind of, once you get this kicked off, then we can start working under zoning code. Like I said, the good neighbor policies is how we look at certain areas of the, you know, industrial, how we manage those, so that'll come as well.
I suggest, Mike, that we look at trying to take this issue in place in areas where it's better suited now in our community, closer to truck routes. Right? We have a lot of what people call obsolete functioning industrial uses right now in our community, and maybe we look at ways to incentivize, you know, to take that use and update some of these uses in areas where it already exists. I know that's hard to do, but it's harder right now, but I think it's better for us in the future.
And I think adding some potential other types of uses that could go into those repurposing of those buildings will be part of the zoning.
Okay. Are there any comments from the audience on this portion? Okay. Andrew, next.
Really, my final slide is just a quick look ahead at what's happening. And I think apropos of what you've just said, Kevin, we are planning property owner meetings, and so those will be with some of the shopping center owners to understand their specific concerns and constraints, but also with the businesses and the property owners in the industrial areas, especially where they interface with residential neighborhoods. So that's coming up. The technical modeling that I've mentioned, we need to start that up. It has a long lead time. It informs both the plan and the environmental. Throughout the fall, we'll be doing a series of meetings with our GPAC to review the individual elements of the plan as they're developed and get ready to vet everything before release of the public review draft general plan in the spring. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Dennis to talk about the transportation element.
Thank you, Andrew. City Council, Plan Commission. This afternoon, I'm going to go into the circulation element, how we move people around. There's been a lot of conversations already, a lot of the concepts and ideas that have already been talked about today really are going to help inform how we re-envision our circulation element. There's been a lot of changes in, from the state about how we consider traffic impacts. I'm going to talk about that, as well as, you know, repurposing some of our roads. You know, do we need the six lanes on Riverside, for instance? I'm going to go into that as well. Briefly touch about truck routes, mass transit, and of course, bike peds and trails. Get the slides, please. So I want to begin with kind of how the world is changing around us and sort of this new philosophy of how traffic impacts are being analyzed these days. For decades now, we've considered traffic impacts to really be a level-of-service thing. This is sort of a letter grade that we assign to intersections and roadway segments. It's really based on time and capacity. How much delay does a vehicle sit in an intersection? Or how much vehicles per day can a roadway handle? And really, there's been a new focus on moving away from level-of-service as a traffic impact and more focusing on vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, which is really just the volume of traffic a project generates multiplied by the length of the average trip that those trips are expected to have. That's where a lot of the modeling comes into place that Andrew spoke about. There's SCAG models, which model other Southern California. There's a San Bernardino model, and then there'll also be a Chino-specific model that'll take a look at this. And really, VMT is really expected to look at encouraging these land use mixes, putting rooftops closer to services, businesses, employment centers, recreation, education, and really trying to make it so that you don't have to live in Chino but work in Orange County to do what you need to do and what you want to do and how you want to live, and really try to improve quality of life. But to dismiss LOS all completely, I think, is not really right for Chino at this point. We're still a developing community. We still have a lot of densification, some of our properties are going to happen, and we certainly want to make sure our transportation infrastructure can handle that. And if there are impacts, we want to know about those, figure those out, and address those, and maybe have a project be responsible for helping us improve those. So that'll be part of it. But as we sit here today and as those methodologies change, we do have to acknowledge that the state of California is not going to continue to build roads, freeways, for example. We can't build ourselves out of congestion anymore is really a big focus of why VMT is so important now. And so we're really going to kind of consider new policies that suggest, or at least anticipate a future level of service, some of our freeway interchanges especially, where they're not desirable. We're talking about like level of service below the level of service D, which is what our current standards are. So we may have to look at that, because we just improved the Central Avenue interchange there at 60. That's not going to happen again within the timeframe of this general plan. So if we get to a point where Central just cannot withstand a level of service D anymore, we need to take note of that and just be accepting of that. That's not to say that the rest of our circulation plan still won't operate well and efficiently, but getting on and off the freeway will just take a little more time than maybe people are used to. As we look at this new philosophy and how that informs how we might repurpose our roadways, we're going to take a look at our roadway classifications. You know, taking a look at the number of lanes, the amount of right-of-way we were requesting, and whether or not we still need all that right-of-way, or can we repurpose that right-of-way without changing it? One of the proposals being put out by Diopatia and their consultants is this prioritization, really taking a look at our roadway network and saying, okay, the industrial area needs to service trucks, so that has to be first and foremost. But that's not to say that we don't put sidewalks in and other active transportation, but it absolutely must function for truck traffic. And we have some issues with that here in Chino. On the flip side of that, we have a lot of roadways in Chino that would really be advantageous to make sure that bicycling is more prominent and prioritized as a primary use. Streets like Cypress Avenue, for instance, has a large biking community that uses that. We got a couple of advocates here in the city that are in my ear about making sure Cypress is well-suited for bikes, as well as buses, trucks, and of course, the vehicles. One of the strategies we're going to implement with, or what we're proposing with the general plan, is a couple of new roadway classifications. A downtown roadway classification. We've already built some here, there's some here in the Civic Center, D Street, C Street, the angled parking, the reduced foot, the reduced roadways, the wider parkways, wider sidewalks, enhanced landscape, formalizing that as an actual roadway classification here. In a downtown feel, we might be even looking at lower than 25 miles an hour as a posted speed limit. So that we're really slowing people down and getting it to be more walkable and more enjoyable to do the kind of things that Andrew was talking about with some of our changes in some of these land uses. As well as consider a rural, local roadway, especially for our sphere of influence properties where they're accustomed to decades of living with the lifestyle that they enjoy. And so not necessarily inflicting a local, you know, sidewalk, curb and gutter, you know, landscaped parkways, all of that. You know, they like the pavement that just ends into, you know, right into the property. So developing a rural classification roadway that helps with that, so that as we move forward with annexation, the residents who live in the sphere of influence have some comfort in knowing that we're not going in there to just all of a sudden suburbanize our sphere of influence. And then while I'm here, I did want to talk about Euclid relinquishment a little bit because we do have some updates on that. While all the legislative actions have been completed and Caltrans has begun their studies, Caltrans sees relinquishment as a project, just like any other construction project, with funding planned for certain fiscal years. Currently, Caltrans plans to fund the relinquishment portion and all the budgetary transfers that might happen between Chino and Caltrans in fiscal year '25, '26. So that means the earliest we can complete relinquishment of Euclid would be this time next year, going more likely probably towards end of 2025 next year into early 2026. With this reclassification, you know, that Riverside Drive jaggedness that drives us all crazy, you know, taking a look at what right-of-way we do have, and taking a look at, while we can't necessarily build another lane there, nor do we maybe want to build another lane, could we put in a buffered bike lane, safe enough so that even though it's Riverside Drive, it's a truck route, it's high volume, can we still safely include bike lanes there? And so that reclassification there, we'll take a look at those sort of things. Because to some of the conversation we had prior, we spent decades trying to get Riverside Drive to its six-lane configuration, and no part of Riverside Drive is ready for that yet. And it'll take decades more to get all of that right-of-way. So in the meantime, can we do something else? And could we take a look at, you know, what does it look like if Riverside is never six lanes? And so we're looking at that not only in Riverside Drive, but there's a couple of other street segments in the city where the current general plan calls for the roads to be very large. Where now with the way we're really planning our land uses and our circulation element, we may not necessarily need that anymore. So you'll see that in the upcoming options. I do want to touch lightly on truck routes. It's a very important topic. You know, Chino has a lot of industrial property throughout our city. One thing to note, though, is that the 60 freeway to our industrial to the south has no direct path. So to get onto the 60 from our industrial properties to the south, you really have to get to Pomona off of Reservoir or into Ontario off of Euclid. Now, Euclid does come down into Chino and service it pretty well. But certainly, there's been some challenges with, especially in our law enforcement, the resources they've had to dedicate to keeping trucks en route. Anecdotally, as we talk to our commercial enforcement officers, very rarely are they getting repeat sites. That means for the thousands of sites that our law enforcement has issued to trucks en route, they're one and only offenders. So we're having to educate an entire country of truck drivers who may only be in California once. So it's a tough, tough thing for us to battle as we look at the truck routes. So and of course, our truck route needs to be compatible with our other agencies and the good neighbor policies we discussed earlier. We want to make sure that those are baked in here. And that'll be all I touch on that. Chino is fortunate that we do have OmniTrans with four fixed routes that service Chino for our bus system. All of those routes interface with our Chino Transit Center, just adjacent to City Hall and the NAC. Future fixed routes, we always get the question about, well, why can't they put a route here? Why can't they put a route there? Really, OmniTrans drives those decision points. A lot of them are generated by customer demand. They obviously look at, you know, when they get a request, how many requests have they had in the area? The OmniTrans board, along with their OmniTrans staff, studies that and then makes the decision on whether or not new future routes are considered. Certainly, the Preserve is starting to grow more and more. The Preserve-specific plan was baked in with in-community bus routes. So at a certain point, there'll be a tipping point where the demand for service out in the Preserve may warrant OmniTrans providing a future route in there. So we're looking closely at that. OmniTrans also provides other services, like a dial-a-ride service for those with disabilities, and an on-demand service such, like Uber and Lyft, which is outlined in the green on the map there for the service area. We're also in discussions with OmniTrans on bus rapid transit. They're reaching out to all of their partner agencies on expanding bus rapid transit throughout the county. And so they've approached us with a couple of ideas of looking at Euclid and Edison, generally speaking, as potential corridors for future bus rapid transit. Now, this is different than fixed route in that it's got fewer stops in between, but the buses travel every 15 minutes, so you get the 15-minute headway. If implemented in Chino, this would be the first time we would have high-quality transit, which would encourage new future development around where those stops might end up being. And so it's important to kind of keep an eye on that and then look at where some of those stops might be advantageous for us, especially as we're looking at repurposing some of these areas in the city.
I'll ask a quick question while you're on that. OmniTrans also has a whole program now for school kids, free bus to school. Do we promote that within Chino?
I believe we do. I think it has when we recently pushed out some social media for OmniTrans and the services they provided. We probably need, especially now that school's getting started back up, it's probably worth going back out and flagging that again.
It would be, especially the kids in the Preserve going to Ayala High School. It would be, especially the kids in the Preserve going to Ayala High School and Chino Hills High School.
Absolutely. The last thing I want to touch on is our getting out of the vehicle and other ways of travel and recreating within Chino. In 2016, the city of Chino completed its Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. That's the map shown here on the screen. And we've made great strides in implementing that plan, showing a lot of the darker lines somewhere around Chino High School and on other areas. The general plan intends to fully incorporate the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan into it and update it. As we talked about with the roadway reclassification and reprioritizing some of our roadways, the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan would be used to help inform that decision. You know, where do we have connectivity? Where do we need connectivity? Where are our major attractions and can we get there outside of the vehicle? And so really taking a look at that and making an entire roadway network that's conducive to not just driving to places, but walking and biking to places. With that, we've recently completed our ADA Transition Plan. And with that, with that plan, we've identified where we're missing sidewalk and pedestrian ramps. And so incorporating that information into our master plan so that as development occurs and capital improvement projects occur, we make sure we fill those gaps and finish the connectivity. And certainly, our Bike and Pedestrian Trails, we want those to interconnect with the entire community, but not just our community, but other communities around us. And so as we discussed earlier, the flood control channels, using, continuing to use those as an opportunity to use those flood channels that cut through our city, north to south, east to west, to improve our trail connectivity. We're currently looking, discussing with the state of California on the California Institute for Men and looking at getting some, an easement of their property to beautify Central Avenue, for instance. And there's an opportunity there to add sidewalk where none exists, and not only add sidewalk, but landscaping and even a multi-use trail adjacent to it. So those discussions have been well, but expanding that to not just be Central, but also El Prado, Kimball, and Euclid avenues and completely surround the state property, interconnected with College Park, interconnected with the Preserve, which then interconnects the entire city together. So really looking at that whole holistic thing to really provide options and mode choice for our residents and businesses. And in connecting that, those trails regionally, you know, we've got state parks to the west of us. We've got other amenities to the north. There's some plan with Ontario Ranch. We've got the El Prado Regional Equestrian Center, south, and the Regional Park as amenities. There's also the Santa Ana River Trail, the Crest to Coast Trail, south of us, out in Orange County, that we have planned connectivity to, but refocusing our efforts and planning for that connectivity along both, there's actually a plan for Euclid to connect to the seventy-one, and there's some dedicated right-of-way that's planned for a multi-use trail there, as well as along the eastern side of the Preserve down Helman Avenue, connecting through Norco and Corona. And then your equestrian use, we have a lot of, we have some equestrian trails that are built in the public right-of-way. And so it's worth taking a look at, are those equestrian trails being used to their full potential, or can they be repurposed into a multi-use trail? Still with equestrians in mind, but making sure that they're also built for other uses such as walking. And so that pretty much concludes my presentation here on the circulation element, kind of the high, the thirty-thousand-foot level of what are some of the things we're looking at from a general plan's perspective on how we might re-envision how we get around this city. And so I've been happy to answer any questions you may have.
Couple of questions I have. Are we going to be re-analyzing some of the speed limits in the residential areas? The reason why I'm asking is it's interesting, on some residential streets, the speed limit is higher than streets like Montevista, which makes no sense that you would allow cars to go faster in a residential area than you do on a major street like Montevista. So are there some that are going to be re-analyzed?
So the city goes out every five years and does a citywide survey. We're planning to do that in 2026. However, I think what you're more asking is, we have some collector-classified roadways that are not local streets that are lined with residential property. So they look and feel like local roadways, but they were always meant to function as more collector roadways. And so for those, they don't get the benefit of that twenty-five mile-per-hour default speed limit. They require speed surveys. So certainly, we can look into that. But currently, there aren't any proposed changes to some of our local streets like that are collectors. It was really the more big arterials that we were looking at reclassifying.
I know the speed limit signs, I think it is, on Oaks seems to be helping a little bit slow down cars because they were going awfully fast there. And I think there are other streets even wider than that that are residential, where people are really hitting high rates of speed, that some of those signs might help.
Mayor, if I can, to that point, so we have had some success with especially streets like Oaks, I believe Twelfth Street, north of Chino, where when we've had paving projects or other opportunities, we've restriped parking lanes and bike lanes on some of those streets to condense those lane widths down, which has actually shown some good impact in slowing vehicles down. So especially on the wider local roads, and we have quite a few of those, especially north-south, those half-mile stretches, where we can look at making that more of a standard to help slow cars down.
Or even maybe putting in bike lanes, painted bike lanes, something to slow them down, because some of those streets, they've become actual, almost raceways for kids. We need better signage for our truck routes also. A lot of the signage, especially on the freeways, they're just, they're not bold enough, and there's not enough of them to warn trucks not to exit on certain streets. And I get a lot of complaints from residents about that. So I think we need better signage for our truck routes. There was at one time, there is an underpass under seventy-one to get to the Chino Hills State Park. And that, years ago, was supposed to be connected with our trail system and walking system so that people could get over to seventy-one, I mean to Chino Hills State Park. I don't know what happened to that, but I know it's not connected. So you might want to look into that, too, with our circulation element. Council comments. Kurt?
Well, I appreciate all the information. There's been a lot of information that's been going back and forth today with this plan for our city that is extremely needed right now, and we're so outdated, it's ridiculous. Other cities around us have grown, have done it right. I think it's about time that we did it. At the same time, all this stuff costs money. And I want people to understand that this is a plan. As we go through our plan and we develop these projects and things like that, then as we put things together, the plans, we also talk about the funding processes that go along with it. So this is a plan, like our downtown Civic Center Master Plan. Things change as we go along depending on what the needs of the city is at that particular moment. But just because we go through this doesn't mean that we're going to dump millions and millions of dollars into projects like this right now until we know where that funding is going to come from. And again, things change as time goes on, and we're going to make the modifications. But I just wanted to make that point.
Karen?
Dennis, thanks. I just, I echo some of the comments that are made here tonight. It's a, we're a community that's growing, and it's going to be nice to see us try and figure out a way to put some of these things into action. A lot of these things you covered tonight are great, but there are things that we've known that have existed for a while, and as time goes on, just like any other project that we have, it's not getting any less expensive to construct it. I think there's probably a way to look at a lot of these things and prioritize it based off of what we think will bring us the best use and for people who want to use some of these things moving forward. I would like to see us put a priority on getting people onto paths and, you know, even some of our local flood control channels, those become hikeable locations where people know they're going to go on a three-mile loop or different things. There's other communities, you know, close to us that have those ability, but when we start talking about the coast, the Crest Trail, and into Chino Hills State Park, it's sad that we're, you know, part of one of the communities that just doesn't have that connected yet. So hopefully, we can look for strategies and ways to get that done for people, not just for our residents, but people who are passing through and want to use those amenities. So it's, you know, I don't, I certainly don't want this to sound like, hey, our staff has done anything wrong, because they haven't. When you start talking about bringing all these things together, it's very complicated, it's very, very difficult to do. But it's also enlightening to see us sitting here talking about it and you, Dennis, trying to take the lead along with the rest of our staff to say, hey, here's what we want to do with these things now. You know, Kurt makes a good point, like, hey, how do we fund it? But we have a vision for wanting this to look different moving forward, and that's really positive. It really is positive. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, so just a couple of comments. Going back to Councilmember Burton's, you know, comments about the plan and, you know, there's money, right, money attached to all this and how is this all going to get paid for? But I think that, you know, there was a question that was asked earlier about the timeline, and, you know, that was a pretty insightful question because, you know, that's what we all think about. And, you know, just thinking about some of the community members that, you know, that I, you know, have conversations with, that's the question they want to know, right? They don't care about, not that they don't care about the plan, but, you know, it's what's going to happen, but, you know? And I, I'm excited to see, right, what's going to happen over the, you know, the near future and, right, and, you know, getting towards the end of this timeline, towards the adoption and finalization. I'm excited to see what's, you know, what's going to be brought back. And so that's one comment. In terms of the circulation, you know, throughout the city and our city streets, one idea I've heard many times is this idea about, and the mayor kind of touched on this about the signage. I've seen in other communities that they have this yellow light that flashes, right, and that kind of helps keep traffic flowing when there's not a lot of, you know, you know, yeah, traffic on the street, maybe late at night or something like that. I'm just hoping that you guys can keep that in mind, and maybe that's something you can, you know, bring forward or, you know, have attached to the plan. The Seventh Street, one thing that was touched upon in the downtown area in terms of the, you know, opening up Seventh Street to Chino Avenue, I think, I'd just like to state that, and I stated this before, I'm not a big fan of that. I know that currently, right now, Seventh Street is, it's used by a lot of community members and there's a lot of traffic on that street, a lot of cars that come up and down that street. And I think just opening up the, you know, the street from D Street to Chino Avenue would, you know, just add more of that. And I understand, you know, there's this idea about having the diagonal parking and all that, that'll kind of slow things down. But, I mean, ultimately, I think in terms of, you know, the downtown master plan, there's also going to be some open space that's going to be just kind of taken up, right, from just the development of the street and the parking and things like that. So I think ultimately, my first option would be that we, you know, we just preserve that and not open it up and, you know, keep that for, you know, for some sort of other use. The, some comments were made about the truck enforcement, that, you know, most of the time, what we found, what you guys have found is that, right, it's one-time offenders. I think that's new information for me. Maybe that's been shared before, but I can't remember. And I know right now, a part of, you know, that strategy or that campaign is, right, the education component. But if I'm hearing that, that's, it's not really solving the issue, you know, I'd like for us to, whether from a public safety perspective or in your department, I think that, you know, right, there's always this idea of pivoting, right, when there's, when there's a solution that's not being, I guess, carried out. And I was hoping that's something you guys can bring back, right? What are other ideas in terms of not just the enforcement side, but, I mean, truly solving the issue? And that's, you know, either one, keeping them on our truck routes, and that's it. And last comment I want to make is, again, going back to the downtown plan, there was this idea that was shared about possibly bringing in some housing, kind of like on the northern side of the plan, and for that housing, right, using that income from that housing to, you know, to fund some sort of project in the downtown area or wherever we decide. I think that's a great idea, and I think what I like most about that idea is just the, you know, generating income. I know that's something when I speak to our city manager and our assistant city manager, that's, I always try to touch on that, is we want to do this project, so let's figure out a way to fund it, you know, instead of using, you know, primarily, right, general funds or something like that. So what I'd like to see is, you know, other strategies other than just housing. You know, we talked about commercial, we talked about other things, but, I mean, whatever the case may be, is there another, you know, idea, you know, maybe a greater idea that generates, you know, a higher amount of income for us that we can place there? And those conclude my comments for now, Mayor.
Couple other comments before I turn it over to the commission. This isn't necessarily for you, Dennis, but more kind of for Andrew Michael. I don't think it's anything that we can put numbers to, but we need to consider the impact of ADUs and upzoning on our sewer and water lines. Because, you know, at Build Out, we think we're going to have X amount of housing units. Well, we really don't know right now with RENA mandates that keep coming down, increasing development standards, and they're a thirty-unit per acre and now allowing ADUs where they're, you know, they can fit. We have a limited capacity with our water and our sewer. And so I think as we're going through the general plan, we need to be aware that we may not be able to physically accommodate a massive upscale in development. Even when we're looking at these commercial shopping centers, the storm drains and water lines and sewer capacity of these areas may not be able to accommodate even our mixed-use concept that we've come up to. So I would say, instead of thinking about this much later, we need to at least consider it now as we're looking at these changes to see the real impact of changing these zonings, what it's going to be. I'd also like to mention, too, I really have some very strong concerns about our quality of life as we're going through a lot of these changes. I mean, I know the buzzwords are highest and best use on land. That isn't necessarily what our residents want. I mean, people have come here and they live here for a certain quality of life and expectations. And then we, under a lot of times pressure from the state and from RENA and people that don't even live here, say, this is what we want you to do. But it isn't why our residents came here. So, we've talked about, Karen mentioned, compatibility, you know, with like industrial, with residential. We really need to have sensitivity to people's quality of life and why they live here and try to respect why they're here. And I know that isn't going to be easy, especially with mandates that are out of our control like the state of California and RENA. But we need to, you know, maybe we need to get to the point where we stand and, you know, make a stand against some of this stuff that's going to impact our residents very negatively. So that's just kind of a general comment that I had. Commission comments. Kevin?
Thank you, Dennis, for your report. Great insight and information. Just three points that I have for you. As we move towards the future with this potential general plan update, I'm wondering, as I consider the term traffic flow, I'm looking at the efficiency of that traffic flow, right, for traffic circulation. And so I don't know what about my personal driving skills tends to allow me to catch every red light, but when I consider the efficiency of traffic flow and being able to catch green lights to effectively move traffic through our city, I wonder, as we're looking into the future, would it be beneficial to write into the general plan perhaps the future use of artificial intelligence into lighting, traffic signal timing, et cetera? Would that be beneficial as we're moving towards more technology that would, I think, allow to, allow us to easier manage perhaps traffic changes in the future? Is that something that we're looking into for the future?
The short question, the short answer is yes. So especially for, as the size of Chino, we're very fortunate in that we have invested a lot of money in technology as it comes to our transportation infrastructure. Nearly every one of our traffic signals is interconnected to a central system in the city hall. And that system is perpetually being updated as new technologies emerge. We're also, we've also been positioned very well to take advantage of those technologies when they've matured. And so AI and artificial intelligence and even, you know, machine learning, a lot of that's- that's already started to creep into the industry just because it's technology-based anyway. But yeah, certainly there will be policies that can help encourage use of technology in all of that means, including artificial intelligence. You know, as we get with, you know, electric vehicles, automated vehicles, there's technology being developed that allows the vehicle to talk directly to the traffic signal and vice versa, so that they are aware of each other and inform both users of those devices, the car and us, what they're all doing, what they're all planning to do. You know, so we're certainly heading that way. And yes, you know, getting from one end to town to the other, which should be a lot easier if the green light was green every time for you. And for all of us individually, the hard part is there's 90,000, getting close to 95,000 people that live here, plus the influx of people who work here, who recreate here, and getting everyone to where they want to go efficiently is always a challenge. One of the good things about Chino is our grid system. It makes it very easy for, okay, if this street doesn't work, just move one street over, and then you're usually pretty good. But certainly to your point, the use of technology to help encourage and make efficient our transportation infrastructure is something we've done a lot of work on and will continue to push for.
Excellent. That's great to hear, because what I have found is some of our signals are on that old timing system to where, not on the timing system, so as to where if I'm going any direction on Riverside Drive, if traffic's coming, you know, from a cross street, as soon as they pull up to their light, it stops all the traffic. And I just thought perhaps there's a better way, maybe using artificial intelligence to battle that. Additionally, in regards to the trucks and the truck routes, Steve and I had a short conversation, wondering, I would have to imagine that truck drivers have a digital mapping system that allows them to know where those truck routes are. So are they just cheating the system and using streets? Because as you mentioned, they're first-time offenders, and their reasoning is that they didn't know where the truck routes were. Shouldn't their maps state that? And are all of our truck routes a part of that system?
So our truck route map is not only published on our city website, it's published in Caltrans city webs, or Caltrans website, under their truck route system for the entire state. So our truck routes are known. Not only that, these truck drivers are professional drivers, and I see the chief's come up behind me. These are professional, yeah, I'll just let him talk.
Good talk, good talk.
No, so with our, dealing with the truck routes, they are using the same program, whether it be Waze or iPhone Maps as the rest of us use for driving. So there's not a specific software that they're using just for trucks. We have three commercial enforcement officers, and their primary responsibility is truck route enforcement. And two, Councilmember Flores is, with his comment as far as the educational component. So these officers, they carry a large stack of truck route maps. So when they pull over a truck that's off a truck route, obviously they ask them where they're coming from or where they're headed to, they provide them with a truck route map. If we see violations coming from one business, then we go to that business, we schedule a meeting with their transportation manager, we work with them to, for them to educate their drivers. We've had meetings with FedEx, we've had meetings with Amazon, where we're having all the truck route violations on Kimball. I think it actually made a difference in that. The challenge they're having is a lot of their drivers are third-party, and so they don't have the contact with those third-party. But it makes somewhat of a difference. It's not a problem that we're going to enforce our way out of. We just had a large meeting with the police department team, with Dennis's team out at Chino and Highway 71, with the increase of trucks that we're having on Chino Avenue to try to reduce it. We're not going to eliminate those trucks, but try to reduce it, and specifically we're addressing the signage.
So there's no truck route overlay for like Google Maps, et cetera?
No, they're using the same ones that all of us are using.
Really interesting in today's day and age. Wouldn't you think all of that would be mapped out, just like we use Google Maps when we're going somewhere that they could as well? And it would tell them, right, where their route is based on truck routes? That's surprising. But thank you for your proactivity in that matter.
Yep.
I think that will make a difference. And then last one for you, Dennis, is in regards to transit, are we considering incorporating Lyft-style services into some of our transit centers? Now, I don't know if the Omnitrans would allow that, but we know that a lot of people want to use Lyft-style services. And so perhaps if we had an area for pickup, drop-off in our transit areas, I think that could be beneficial.
Yeah, I think that's something as we develop commercial properties or places where ride-share is going to be prevalent, that we look for those opportunities to include. I know a lot of developers, as they do that, they include that. And I think I understand we're getting short on time, too.
Thank you, Dennis.
Sure.
Yeah, we only have about three minutes. I'll let the commission finish. Go ahead, Brandon.
And I'll make mine real quick, not picking on you, so I want to give you kudos as far as the Euclid information, but would love to get more information or regular update on our traffic. As a planning commissioner, as I'm asked about many things across the city, the number one topic is traffic, and I'm this way. So in saying that, with Euclid, I mean, not with Euclid, with Riverside, we continue to talk about six lanes, five lanes, whatever it is. Is there other possibilities, meaning put in a fifth lane that will go, you know, time variance, it will go, you know, east to west certain times of the day, so we can possibly move traffic? Can we be more agile when we need to change traffic patterns instead of waiting for studies to come about? Can we come to the council, your department, and say, we've had these particular determinations, the police have allowed us, our officers have said, this needs to happen, we need to make a change, and then present that? So then the council can say, yes, for a period of time, two months, three months, a year, until we need to do it again, let's make some changes quicker. Because again, as a planning commissioner, that is the number-one thing that I'm stopped about, talked about. Everybody wants to know about restaurants and all the other things, but traffic, 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 traffic.
Keeps me gangly employed.
Any else, anything else from the commission? Okay, Curtis had one more comment.
Real quick question, Dennis. Going back to the truck route, and I'm sorry, but we're going to do it. The mayor had talked about signage. I know that we have, they appear to be oversized signs at this point. Are they oversized for the most part in the intersections that hang off the poles?
Yes, they are. They're larger than standard.
Okay. So are there guidelines from the state, or do we, as a city, have guidelines on actually how big they can be?
There's guidelines from the state in their design manual. The sizes for typical roadways, we've consciously made the choice to go larger than that. So they're more, they're not quite, I wouldn't say freeway size, but certainly larger than normal, yes.
And yet they still don't really work, or they're ignoring the signs as they drive down the roadway. So if we can maybe go a little bit bigger, that'd be great. And also, I know there's probably a universal sign for no trucks, but is there a way that we can change up the design a little bit maybe to really capture the attention of the driver as they go up, it's like, wow, that's, what is that sign? And they look at it, it still has the universal no trucks on there, but the, maybe the color, I don't know what it would be, but just something different that would capture the attention of those guys that are driving.
Noted.
We do have one request to speak from the public, and that is Nora Garcia. Is she still here? Okay. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to make some last comments before we adjourn this workshop? We do have another one starting at 6:00. Okay, you see none? Thank you all for being here. A lot of valuable comments, and I'm sure our staff is a bit overwhelmed, as well as Andrew. So with that, we are adjourned.